Good evening, welcome to the April 14th Township Board of Trustees Business Meeting. Can we start by the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Okay, we have a couple of additions to the consent agenda. I guess we have to do these individually. Can we, I need a motion to add consent agenda number seven. It will be the Groseal Police Department, 2021, four explorers being sold. Do you need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on it at all? We just, this was a late add-on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And carried. That will be now Kevin, consent agenda number seven, okay? And we also have another one, consent agenda number eight will be the Police Commission resignation. If I could get a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that will be then consent agenda number eight, Kevin, got that? Alright, so I do need now an approval of the agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all approved, alright. We do have a presentation tonight. We have the swearing in of our new fire chief, Robert Roscoe. Mickey, would you like to talk, or?
Yeah, I was scrolling up to that one spot.
Okay.
Where is it? I can just talk, but I don't see it on here.
Okay.
Well, it's not a motion or anything.
No, no.
There was something earlier on here, I thought.
Yeah, it's just a presentation, and we don't vote on this. It's just the presentation to swear in.
Okay.
Whatever, you guys, go ahead if you'd like to speak, just give them a.
Bob, come on out.
Okay. Jameson will take the book.
And Bob, if your wife and daughter want to come up and stand by you too, and then can get some pictures afterwards. So, just to say that last time, you know, we put the vote through and voted you in as our new fire chief. I'm just proud to say that you're already doing a great job. I went to the training last Wednesday and saw how well you were already doing and how the people respect you and support you. And I'm just very proud that this has taken place today. So, we'll let Jameson go ahead and read you in.
Okay, this is what, the third oath that you've taken now? Something like that? Okay, so you probably know how to do it. So, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of fire chief.
Of fire chief.
In and for.
In and for.
The township of Groseal.
The township of Groseal.
County of Wayne.
County of Wayne.
And the state of Michigan.
And the state of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
We got a couple signatures here.
So, is it okay to just take a minute and do a couple pictures real quick?
And you're right there.
Hey, Millie, can you come up too? Cause I asked you and I'm nice. Come on, get up there, girl. So, Millie's from senior housing and Bob is always over there helping them, and so.
Bob's always over there protecting us, tell you the truth, with an landlord like we have.
Right, so, can I grab some pictures?
He has very safe.
Same time, fire department.
Well, yes, it's in, it's between you and John, you've done a heck of a job.
Come on, get together and I'll get.
Get me. I'm a general now. Alright.
Do you want one with that in the background?
Really nice thing about.
Chief Lorraine, can I get one with Chief Lorraine, please?
Of course you can.
Hey, now I get married, I don't, this is not The Bachelor.
Alright, give me your bachelor.
Now, with Chief Porserelli too, for that comment.
That's still, thank you.
For the bachelor.
Congratulations, Robert, and to your family.
Before Joe yells at me, do you want that in the background?
I don't know, thank you, I have one already. Thank you, I don't want to hold everybody up.
Sorry.
Okay, Bob, stop. We always do one right there. Look at me.
I'm literally chewing on it.
I got it.
Congratulations. Alright, thank you. Alright.
You just shake my hand, but that's okay. I'm just teasing you. Congratulations.
Alright, Brian, do we have, we have public comments for tonight by email?
Uh, yes, I actually have two, they're by the same person. So, I don't know if you want me to read one now and read one later, since they only have three minutes total.
Why don't we do this for tonight, if the gentleman has two emails, read them both, so he gets, you know, we get the point across.
Okay.
And we'll do that just for tonight, cause we, you know, there is a three-minute by either email or by, but let's let him do both. And because I'm sure they're, are they connected? If they're connected, do them both, and let's move on.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so Doug Scott, Marquette Drive. Based on past published estimates, the free and toll bridges see sixteen thousand and four thousand crossings respectively per day, twenty thousand total. Based on these estimates, the revenue for a sixty-day free bridge closure would be three point six million dollars, with almost two point nine million being a windfall due to the detour, without factoring in the higher toll fees for cash and heavier vehicles. Tolls are a private owner's only source of revenue for operations, long-term capital improvements, and profit, making these windfalls welcome. While the prospect of windfall toll revenue is no doubt enticing to the township, I expect many residents would prefer some toll relief since the township does not need to make a profit and the taxpayers are paying for long-term capital improvements, especially if there is an alternative means to obtain some or all of these windfall revenue. The following question and answer is from the Bridge FAQ document on the township website. Question, will the township pursue alternative funding sources to help offset bridge costs? Answer, the township has not only pursued alternative funding for public works project other than local tax revenues, but has had success in obtaining these funds. Is the intent to pursue any outside funding available for toll bridge operation and maintenance to help offset costs? MCL forty-one point two B, the new state statute which was enacted to allow Groseal Township to charge fees for use of the toll bridge, does not limit those fees to tolls. It specifically lists rent as one of the fees it can charge. Since it is the township's stated intent to pursue any outside funding available, will it pursue charging the county rent to use the toll bridge as a detour, as it is now allowed to do by law? If not, why not? And the second one. The township's published toll bridge draft timeline indicates approximate times of five months for engineering, three months for bidding and bonding, three months for material procurement, and seven months for construction. Eighteen months total from the start of engineering work to the end of construction. The engineering services proposal from H&amp;H indicates twelve months for engineering, fourteen to eighteen months for machinery procurement, six months for deck procurement, assumed to be concurrent with machinery, and eighteen to twenty-two months for construction. The proposal did not include bidding and bonding time, but assuming the same month, same three months, this is forty-seven to fifty-five months total for the project. While I understand the township's timeline is a draft, how do you explain what appears to be an enormous underestimation in the project time when compared to the proposal, eighteen months compared to forty-seven to fifty-five months? Did the township's consultants come up with eighteen months? The proposal indicates the toll bridge will be closed for the entire construction period and suggests that the swing span may be removed entirely to facilitate repairs, painting, and installation of new machinery, while, which would eliminate any possibility of emergency use. If the Parkway Bridge has to close during that time, which governmental entity will be responsible providing a detour to maintain vehicular access to Groseal? That is all I have.
Hey, what we'll do with that, there's a lot of questions in there, a lot of issues. I'll take them piece by piece tomorrow. Derek and I will, we'll talk it over, and if the answers, if we, if we feel the answer is appropriate, then we will, and I'll put it out there, I have no problem with that, so that's gonna take a few minutes. Is there anybody now from the audience that would like to give any type of public comment? We good? Anybody over here? Okay, so I think we're good with the public comment. Kevin, like, do the consent agenda, sir.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda twenty-five dash zero zero one, which consists of the following.
Hold on, yeah, we gotta get a second. Thank you, go ahead, sir.
Number one, minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, check register dated. Thank you. Minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, check register dated through April eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Approval to process and distribute payments through May second, twenty twenty-five. Resignation of Construction Board of Appeals member. Number five, electrical inspector contract. Number six, community development reports. Number seven, cell Ford Explorer. And number eight, a police commission resignation. And that's the total of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So, just need an approval, or a motion rather, to approve the entire consent agenda? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda two-five zero zero one, approved. Oh, I had a question on the zero zero one, I see, because of the April, first meeting in April, okay. Action items. The approval of airport bat wing purchase. Bill, you have that one?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves purchase.
Is your microphone on, Bill?
Yes, I'm not close enough to it. Is this better?
Whatever you gotta do.
We'll give this a try.
Alright, thank you.
The Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the purchase of a used Woods BW fifteen fifty-two bat wing rotary cutter. This approval is contingent upon the final approval of the Groseal Airport Commerce Park Commission. The purchase will be through Doable Equipment Incorporated in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, seventy cents. Now, give you some brief history here, the purchase.
Hold on, did we get a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Uh, Jameson, second that. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
This purchase, uh, the purchase of this used bat wing will support ongoing grass cutting operations on the airfield and in the commerce park. The current bat wing dating back to the nineteen seventies is no longer reliable for continued use. Multiple bids were received for the same model, and the selected vendor is a current local supplier with readily available parts. The expected delivery timeframe is one to two months. I'd like to add a couple of comments on this, if I might.
Sure.
Woods equipment, in my personal experience, has been highly recommended. On my own tractor, I have a back blade that's a Woods, and it was, I was using at that time a contractor that the township used for things. They're well regarded as durable and reliable. And in talking with Janelle about these gentlemen who are taking this piece and are going to refurbish it to a degree, they know what they're doing, they know these people, and that they're reliable. I think this is a fine choice.
Alright, any questions for Bill on this issue?
Is there a reason the board's approving it before the commission is?
I can't speak to that, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
I know that's what brought to us by Janelle, that it was needed. I did not realize it didn't hit the commission yet.
I can, I can say this about that, I do know this. We have, I believe, two bat wings. One is wider, and this fifteen-foot is for the narrow spaces. And now grass is growing, and they might want to get this thing and get it in shape, and their sense of urgency might have motivated this.
Yeah, this was a necessity, Jameson, when I spoke to Janelle, so that may, I don't know if that helps you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just curious why it was.
It was a necessity, it was not an emergency, but they needed it right away. Okay.
Might be because we only have the one meeting in April, and they didn't want to wait all the way till May, and they might not have had a Commerce Park Commission meeting before that, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? No further questions? Okay, action item number one, approval of airport bat wing purchase, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Action item number two. Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes adjustments to non-union employee wages for the fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six in accordance with the attached proposed non-union wage adjustment chart dated April third, two thousand twenty-five. I need a second.
Second.
In accordance with Administrative Policies and Procedures, Section three point eight, sub D, the attached wage chart is being presented to the board for consideration. For comparison purposes, the most recent annual cost of living rate for the Detroit-Warren Dearborn area was three point three percent February twenty-four to February twenty-five. Proposed rate of two point five percent is below the CPI and comparable with the TPOM wage adjustment, uh, which is point five percent below POM wage adjustment. The proposed market adjustments were evaluated over the past several months by the township manager, supervisor, treasurer, and the department liaisons. All proposed adjustments have been accounted for in the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget. Attached to this action item is a memo which addresses the proposed market adjustments. Included are both internal and external comparison numbers for the appropriate positions. Anybody have any questions? We went over this at the budget meeting. We decided we believe two point five was appropriate. Now, again, this is non-union, this is non-contract employees. And this is what this is for. Do we have any questions on this?
I just have a quick point of clarification, or, it's the twenty-five twenty-six annual budget, not the twenty-four twenty-five, so it has been, these have been incorporated into the current budget year that we're in. And then, in accordance with the conversation during the budget process, the market adjustments have the, um, the CPI adjustment inclusive in it, so it's not market. And then CPI on top of that, the two point five is built into that market adjustment that's listed on that chart.
Alright, sir, thank you. Okay, any other questions for myself or for Derek? Alright, no questions, all in favor? Agenda item number two?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Non-motion carried, thank you. Number three, accept fire chief retirement, Mickey?
Uh, the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby accepts with regret the retirement of John Camilleri from the position of fire chief effective April fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And you need a second?
Second.
Thank you. John Camilleri has served as fire chief for Groseal since June of two thousand and twenty-three. The fire department has benefited from Chief Camilleri's leadership and guidance during his time in this position. Since occupying the position in two thousand and twenty-three, chief has doubled membership in his short tenure. This is significant as demands on the department increase each year, and recruitment to the field of public safety continues to be a challenge industry-wide. The ability of the department to recruit talent is a testament to the chief's ability to cultivate a positive organizational culture. Chief will continue to serve as a firefighter and EMT with the Groseal Fire Department after his retirement. The township will continue to benefit from his knowledge, experience, and education, and the department will continue to benefit from his leadership and valuable mentoring. Groseal Township would like to thank Chief Camilleri for his service to the township and its residents, and he really isn't retiring, they just had the training last week, um, where they were cutting apart the vehicles, and the one was turned on its side, and he was right in the middle of it. So, he's not going anywhere. So, thank you to Chief Camilleri.
Okay, all set, thank you very much. I guess there'll be no questions on this one, or unless there are, I'm sorry, guys and ladies, if I just didn't anticipate any questions on the resignation. Action item number three, accepting fire chief retirement, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And once again, John, if you're out there tonight, thank you very much for everything. I know you're sticking around, still on the fire department, so, but thank you for all your service, what you've done for us the last few years. I appreciate it, so. Alright, number four, I think, Mickey, would you like to read that one, please?
Yep. Uh, the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes amendments to Chapter two fifty-eight, Utilities, Article two, Public Right-of-Way, Section two fifty-eight twenty, to allow the township's safety officer to enforce the provisions of Article two as described in the attached document. And I need a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, um, thank you. Currently, the ordinance permits only the DPS director to issue stop-work orders for unsafe construction within the township. The fire department has suggested expanding that authority to the township's safety officer as well. The amendments to the ordinance permits this. So, that's actually a good idea.
So, who is the township's safety, what is the township's safety officer?
It is the fire chief, the fire chief actually.
Fire chief's always been the safety officer, way back to Duncan.
Okay.
Yeah, they made him the safety officer.
I'd like to ask a question on that point. The skills for safety, when I'm thinking of them, when you're talking about the Department of Public Service, are somewhat compatible with being a, a, a safety officer, if you would, for the fire situation, but they're not the same, and there are differences. I don't know that those differences have been taken into consideration. I've never thought of it until this moment. If this hadn't been here, I may not have ever thought of it. But it seems like a reasonable question to ask under the circumstance.
So, the, the purpose of this was to ensure that there was always overlapping coverage when it came to review of activities that are happening within the township, contractors doing work within the township, and the ability to, to oversee it and potentially shut it down if that construction work is, is unsafe. Doesn't mean necessarily that the individual, whether it's a DPW director or the safety officer, understands all of the regulations, but they'd have the ability to understand unsafe work conditions. We have resources available to us to get furtherance, as far as information is concerned, if we feel it's an unsafe act. So, whether that's through MIOSHA, or through our township engineer, or the DPW director, the safety officer, but having multiple sets of eyes on construction activity that's happening within the township, and the ability to shut down a, an activity. This just gives additional responsibilities and authority, really, to the safety officer to allow for that, so you have that overlapping coverage.
Yeah, I think the fire chief, it would be nice to have a township's safety officer, right? But that would just be another paid position that would cost taxpayers more money. I don't think being the DPS director, that, that refers to you, right? So, you're not driving all over the township all day, noticing construction concerns, but the fire, and the fire chief isn't, but at least he's out in the community, right? Driving around, responding to calls, you know, things like that, so I, I see that as a good thing. I also think the fire chief knows, knows quite a bit about safety as it comes to heavy equipment, power tools, right, PPE, things like that. So, maybe he doesn't know, like, hey, you have to put a triple wall stud in there or something like that, but certainly he'd be like, yeah, you guys can't be doing that without harnesses, right? So, I, I don't think it's a bad thing.
I don't think so either, with all his experience, and I mean his experience as fire marshal as well. He's in and out of those buildings, and he can certainly identify if something looks too dangerous. And you, you know, it doesn't mean you can't do it going forward, but he can at least stop it until he verifies that it is in fact safe, or maybe adds additional safety protocols.
Under, oh, I'm sorry, Mickey, what you done?
No, you're okay, Joe.
You have something, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, under the circumstances, and Jameson, you bring a good point, because when I read through this, um, I think that unfortunately with the township, we have individuals that have to do more than one job, they're sitting in this room right now, that are doing more than one job. But I think that the individual that is best qualified, that we need and appropriate, and what is helpful too, is a, is a fire marshal background for this also, because of the, um, you know, initial issues that he dealt with as a fire marshal, I think that, um, and it's been, it, it's been a position that's been reliable. What I mean by reliable is it's been done correctly for this issue, so, by the fire chief, that is, you know, all the way back to Duncan, so. Anyway, I just want to say, Mark, I'm sorry, I mean, interrupt you.
Quick question, didn't the, in the last term, the last board, didn't we approve of a safety inspector, a building safety inspector?
Yes, uh, these are different things. The safety inspector, just similar to, on, later on the agenda, you guys have approval of a contract with an electrical inspector. So, we have building inspectors that we contract with to inspect work people are doing at, on homes and whatnot, and making sure they're in compliance with their permit and the building code. This is more about a contractor doing a sewer line in a public right-of-way, and they don't have proper shoring. Having multiple individuals that have the ability within the township governance to shut down that operation if they see it to be unsafe, that's what this is about, getting additional coverage, having additional people that can do that. And, and this actually what, what, where this came out of, is we've had, you know, calls on the weekend where work was happening, and the fire department more, was more accessible because they might have recognized or received the call down at the, at the fire department or the police station, so they were able to respond quicker to that situation and assess the risk. Um, so it's just additional coverage, and once again, this is coming out of the fire department. They would like to have this authority, this ability. The safety officer have this ability, but it's also recognizing from a DPW standpoint, it's probably good to have additional coverage, and, and that's what this is all about.
No, yeah, I'm not questioning that, I just, we'll put more on the chief's plate now, the fire chief, that's all I'm saying. I'm just, I thought we approved an actual safety, a building safety inspector, I think it was, and I'm not talking about a building inspector, Mr. Thompson, I'm talking about another person.
Um, it might have been dangerous buildings officer?
That's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's something altogether, is that something that couldn't have fallen her's purview, or that's part of time anyway, so, right?
Right, they're brought in when that, when we have a dangerous building, it needs to be reviewed, not a.
Okay.
I'd like to interject a, a thought here, if there's a potential improvement, or at least worthy of some thought. When I was thinking of the remarks I was making before Derek, I was talking about something like recognizing a collapse in a sewer installation, or, or maybe the, the way a, a, a backhoe is blocking traffic on a street. And those things are not normally, to my thinking as a layman, consistent with what a fire marshal needs to do, or a fire chief to put out a fire in a burning building. It is a little bit different situation. Having said that, is it possible or does there exist sort of a course that raises a level of awareness within the scope of what we're talking about for the Safety Person? If that is the case, if one could be found and we put it in as a requirement that they review it once a year or something, then I think that would enhance what we're doing here.
Yeah, if we're talking about shoring and excavations, we can talk about whether that Safety Officer has that necessary specific guidance.
That's exactly where I'm going with this. And I'm just saying that if there was a class for two hours once a year that just enhanced awareness, that might have some value.
Sure, we can look at that. And I'm not saying that they don't already have that because they very well could, but we'll confirm that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? With none, action item number four, ordinance amendment for Safety Officer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number five, approve Bridge Commission Ordinance. And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna read this and we'll get a second and then we'll go through the history. And then what I would like to just talk first about how I've been contacted by some of the board members and what the issues are. And then we'll let all the board members give their opinions because we're only hung up on one thing, but let's get to this and I'll show you where we're at then. So the Groseal Township Board hereby approves and authorizes the publication of the attached Bridge Commission Ordinance. Any second?
Second.
If approved on the 14th, the ordinance will be published in the next available edition of the News Herald. The ordinance will become effective the day following publication. Following the ordinance's effective date, applications will be solicited. Applications will be reviewed and applicants will be recommended to the Board in accordance with the Township policies and procedures. Appointment to the commission shall be the majority vote of the Township Board of Trustees. Now, let me explain how we got here. We had a couple of meetings. We had one meeting and then I think we even had a separate meeting on to get some of these issues cleared up. And in my notes, the only thing that now we have an issue with on the Board is the individuals, the number of individuals that are the residents. We do have one Township Supervisor, one Township Board Member, who we can pick at a later date. We don't have to have their name in this because all we need is the position for the ordinance. And we had three Township Residents at large as voting members. So some of the individuals on the Board have got a hold of me. They feel that they would like five Township Residents and then two others to make it a seven individual Board. My personal opinion is, I have no problem with either. I don't mind the five. We've had some talk to me that they would rather see five and I know that we have some very educated and qualified women and men on this island. And I know that we can find five individuals that will definitely help us out. I think our Boards have shown that we have some very capable, intelligent people on these Boards. So I have no problem with the five, but I want to hear from you. And then after tonight, we have to get this going. I would like to vote on it. And the only thing that I saw in the notes, and I want to make sure I'm correct, is that was, that was the only issue that we were hung up on was the number of individuals from the, from Groseal that are applying, okay?
How many people are in this right now? Just refresh me. Five or seven?
There's, there's actually five in the beginning ordinance. And some have told me they wanted now five plus the two, which would make it seven, Bill. So why don't we?
Seven, we now, we have seven now, but there's five voting. If I say yes, what am I voting for?
Yes, we have seven total.
With five voting.
Yes, we have two that are just consultants, though. You're correct.
That's what I wanted to make clear.
And we have two people from the Board and three Township Residents. Some have asked me to put five Township Residents and then two Board Members and two consultants. So that would make seven voting individuals, nine that could show up to a meeting. So what is your, Bill, would you like to go first? You can, if you like. I'd like to know your input, so we want to get this tonight.
I'm in favor. I personally would prefer five voting members. Have the other two that are there be there as knowledgeable people, as consultants, if you would. We need, I've had some comment before where I liked a little larger group because we needed more headroom to get all the technicalities of that subject under control.
Okay, when you say five, Bill, I want to make sure I'm writing my notes here. So you would like to see five citizens on that Board, correct? Five people from the community, two of us from the Board. Is that correct? So you'd have seven voting on the Board. Is that what, is that what you mean?
I was expecting five voting on the Board and two giving advice for a total of seven.
Okay, so that would mean only three citizens you would like to see.
So that's how it is now?
Yes. That, I think that's a good way to go. Because if you get too big, you have a hard time getting a consensus.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying, Bill. Go ahead. All right, Mickey, could you give us your?
Yeah, Joe, I like it the way it's set up right now. We have like a smaller commission for the Fire Commission. And if you have a good commission with sophisticated people, I think you're fine with the smaller number. I do think when you get too many, it's harder to schedule meetings. It's harder to get consensus. I just think it's better to be nimble and keep it the way it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Jameson?
Yeah, I agree with Bill and Mickey. I think that having a seven-member Board with five voting members allows them to be agile enough to still get things done at a rapid pace. I will say, by setting this particular commission up so that the appointment, when it says appointment to the commission shall be by a majority vote of the Township Board of Trustees, you mean, that refers to commissioners?
Commissioners.
Okay, okay. Yep, that's all I am.
Okay. Kevin, would you like to give your?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I would like to make, like to make an amendment to the commission, to the ordinance. And would you like me to make?
Well, just say what, yeah, no, say what your opinion is.
Sure.
And then we would do that after Mark and Mark would give their opinion.
So what the, the way the membership of the commission is currently written, it says that the Township Supervisor, a Township Board Member at Large, so that would be the Supervisor, a Board Member from this Board, and three Residents, Township Residents. All of those folks would be voting members. Also, we, it said we would also have the Township Finance Director as a member of the Board, non-voting. The Civil Engineer shall be a non-voting member of the commission also. And what I'm suggesting is that the commission will be comprised of seven members. Of the seven members, the position, positions filled by the Township Supervisor, Township Board Member at Large, and five Township Residents at Large. And that will be the voting members. I'm suggesting that we do not have the Finance Director and the Civil Engineer as Board Mem, non-voting Board Members. They can be, they are employed by the Township for their services. So they can be at the meeting on a, each time or as needed. So, excuse me, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
I think that there, as has been said, there are a number of Residents that have shown an interest in being on the Township, on the Bridge Commission. There are a number of candidates that, or there are a number of Residents on Groseal that have the background, engineering, business, finance. I think that there are so many different moving parts to the bridge, literally and figuratively, that it would benefit the Township to have a larger Board so that the work involved could be spread out to more people. And I think that this would be similar to what the DPS Commission has or the DPW Commission, which is the, they also have seven members. Five of them or six of them, I believe, are Township Residents with a liaison, which I am. And I'm suggesting that this would, we do that similar to what the Department of Public Services or Department of Public Works does. I think there's too much, there are too many issues to push it all on to three people, three Residents. So that's my suggestion.
All right, Kevin, thank you very much. Mark, would you like to?
Yeah, I kind of want to, pardon me, echo kind of what some of those things that Kevin has said. I think the way it's set up right now, it leaves it a little bit too top-heavy, so to speak, with the Township Authority. I think we should have the nine-member Board, seven voting members. We should have the Treasurer and the Engineers and Consultant, non-voting members. I'm not even sure that we need two actual Board Members, the Supervisor and one Trustee. I think we should set up similar to, say, the DPS Commission. We have one liaison and more members of the community. I think it would be, it gives a little more fairness, a little more openness, I believe, in my opinion. We don't know what the Board mix is going to be later on down the line. We don't know how things could go, right? So I think in order to try to preserve that and protect that, because this is going to be a huge undertaking, it already has been. And I don't think we're going to have a problem with people showing up for that particular membership regarding the bridge.
Okay.
I'm in favor with Kevin.
All right, Mark, thank you very much. Margaret, what is your opinion?
So I'm gonna put a little bit of a different twist. I'm aligned with the five-member option. I do think it's a good idea. You could perhaps just have the Supervisor as liaison. We don't need an extra Board Member. You could fill that with a Resident. But I do like the smaller commission idea. I do think it's more streamlined that way. I think you can move quicker and easier. I don't think we need to have seven. I think it becomes really cumbersome that way. That's just my opinion. And my other little twist to this is, I'm really not, I don't see why we need to add this into the News Herald. I think if we post this on our Township website, I think that's more than adequate. I don't know if there's a requirement for the News Herald.
There is. There's a legal requirement to be posted, yeah.
Does it have to be the News Herald or can it be any?
They are paper of record, though. That's why, Margaret. Yeah, it is a, it is a legal requirement.
It just, it's, it's a fiscal thing for me. It just seems like a waste of money. I don't know how many people actually look at that News Herald too often and that's the only reason I'm pointing it out. But if it's a requirement, maybe that's something we can, I don't know.
It is. It's a legal requirement, so. Margaret, may I ask you a question, please, just so I, I make sure. So you are in favor of a three Township Resident Board and two other positions. Is that correct?
So I would twist it and say four Township Members and then yourself as the liaison to that Board. So five total voting Members? And then you can add your, your consultants, as you will.
And then the two, the two, okay, so it'd be four citizens, okay. Here's the issue. Here's the issue. We have, it doesn't matter which way I vote because we have three one way, we have two another and one another. So I'm just gonna ask this. Does anybody have a problem if we kind of make it palatable for all? And Margaret, I think you bring up a good point. If we have one, one individual from the Township as a liaison and we have four citizens instead of three or five, it kind of makes it, I'm not gonna say we're cutting it in half, but we kind of are cutting it in half. Because we don't have the vote right now to go that way. It doesn't matter which way I vote because it's even and you want something else. So you're kind of, I'm just saying.
I just, I think five is best, but that's just my suggestion. I don't, it doesn't have to be that way, but I think, like you said, it kind of.
We don't have four votes to go the other way or this way. So I'm gonna ask the Board, does anybody here have a problem? And I, I'm gonna say that what we remove, I have no problem if we go with, because we are compromising. I'm trying to get consensus here. If we have four Members from the public instead of three and instead of five and we have one liaison from the Board and we move forward that way, would anybody, could we do that?
I would oppose that, too.
The thing is, you're gonna have so much heavy lifting and research and following up on things.
Well, as of now, you don't, you wanted how many on the, on the Board?
As the way it was proposed.
Three.
Three of us have all agreed with the current proposal.
I got that. So Margaret, unfortunately?
Who's, who's the three of us?
Bill, Mickey and I have all stated we, we like the current proposal.
And it doesn't matter which way I vote. Margaret, unfortunately, I'm not trying to throw it on your shoulders, but I guess we'll have to make a decision.
Will you vote, too?
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't matter even then.
We're not. There's only seven people on the Board.
Well, which, what was your feelings, Joe?
Yeah, you never said what you thought.
My feelings is, I told you in the beginning, I have no problem with the three or the five people. I wanted to see what the majority was. I wanted to get consensus so we can all agree on this.
Okay.
And.
And I don't have a problem per se with your original plan. I just felt like if we have to, you know, kind of divide us a bit, I'm not seeing why, you know, one liaison isn't, you know, is it, how much work is this gonna be? I mean, is it gonna be too much for, you know, yourself?
Well, I'm doing it right now.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, myself and Derek are handling, I mean, Derek, you are handling most of it, but Derek and I are handling the management end of the bridge right now.
That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to give everybody a balance.
It's tough as times.
I'm okay with the original, but I like the, I'm trying to give other people on the Board who aren't, you know, aren't in agreement with the whole five number. I am. I like five. I think it's a good idea. But if we add on an extra and not add-on, but if we adjust, take one out from the Board and put in a Resident, will that make it more palatable? I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. They, we're, even if I vote for the three or the five, let's say I vote for the five, it's still three and three and you're, you're the opposite one out. So not like it's on your shoulders. I don't mean that at all. But my point is, when you say the five or the three, are you saying you would vote for the three people from the Township as opposed, and you would want four people as opposed to the three or five, rather? And Kevin wants to make a friendly amendment, but the friendly amendment isn't gonna go through because he doesn't have enough votes.
We don't know that.
Okay.
Well, my issue is.
A friendly amendment, you have to accept. You either accept it or you don't, right? So.
You, Joe.
Me.
Right, because you proposed it.
I have to, so.
Before we move on further, I'd like to add another comment to this. When I envisioned this thing with, with five people and two advisors, I'm assuming we use special care to get people who know what they're talking about and are decisive in their nature. I mean, I remember when I was a kid and was asking for advice. I'd go to some people who were supposedly so busy that they wouldn't open the door to you. I managed to get through the door, get an answer that worked and was out in 10 minutes. Those people knew what they were doing and if you knew what you were doing and acted on it, you got it done. And I see this bridge as dealing with some pretty hard facts that require some hard-headed, quick, pragmatic, accurate thinking. In my mind, five people with a couple with savvy heads and everybody else that's decisive, that's the way to go.
You're also gonna get a lot busier once the construction starts. You're gonna have the engineering, you're gonna have Wayne County Bridge shut down. That's why I think you want two from the Board.
So yes, you three are in for three Members from Groseal, from the citizens. I got that.
Decisive guys, yeah.
On that side, one, two, and even if I go with the five, we're still three and three. And Margaret, I guess we just, if the friendly amendment isn't, I mean, I don't know how you can make a friendly amendment if you're not in favor. We don't have a consensus on the Board.
Brian, if, if I make a friendly amendment and it's seconded, is it then able to be talked about?
We can talk about it.
Oh, we can talk. That's not a problem.
Right, you can.
It's the vote. And again, we have, let's say I go with the five Members and two, five people from the public. And we still have a three and three vote, but Margaret would like to see the four. So I guess we don't know until Margaret votes.
So I think, Kevin, to your question, you're, what you're proposing is an amendment, not a motion. So there's no vote on your amendment. The individual who made the motion can either accept your amendment or decline it. And then we all vote on whatever that proposal is.
So I'm, I'm suggesting a friendly amendment and I have an amendment here that I would like to propose.
It's up to Joe to accept it.
Does the Supervisor have to accept the amendment or not accept it?
Correct. The person who made the motion would have to accept.
And what happens if it gets turned down then? Is the other proposal back on the table or is it off for the night?
We're back where we started from.
Back where you started from. I mean, it'll be at the main, the original motion.
I'm gonna make a motion right now, a friendly amendment to have, let's make it easy. I'm not trying to. easy. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth or change you, for five citizens and two board members. And that's.
I would like to make, I would like to make an amendment, a friendly amendment, and have the board discuss the amendment. And that process will, we can hash out how many members we, I'm making, there are more than, it's more, there are more questions than just the number of people on the commission. I have more suggestions other than that.
We.
So what I'm asking for is that I make a friendly amendment, you approve it, it's seconded, I read it, the board discusses it, and then we can.
The only thing that we were hooked on was the number of people from, we get from the public. Now we have not, if you have others, you have other issues. But what I'm saying is, that was the first thing, and the only thing we were hooked on, was that total number. Now we're coming up again with all different ideas. So Brian, can we just vote on this one? And if it?
Well, yeah, let's say we take a vote on the friendly amendment and go from there.
Well.
I think that's reasonable.
If you accept the amendment, right?
Well, no, I think, I'm sorry. Were you saying, let's vote on this current ordinance?
Yeah, I was saying, just, why don't we just vote on the current ordinance?
Right, that's, I think.
If it goes down, you can bring it back.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've got a problem with that, because if there's something in what he has to say that hasn't come to the floor, we might be cutting ourselves short.
Kevin can say it, right? We're in discussion now.
Go ahead, go ahead. What are the differences you'd like to see? Just say what the difference is, and we'll talk about it.
I would like to do this, I would like to do it as a friendly amendment.
But this is, this is the process.
Go ahead, give your friendly amendment.
No.
There's a motion on the floor. Joe has made a motion.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
You don't get to just have a vote to change his motion. He has to accept that you're making changes to his motion.
I'm asking the supervisor to accept my friendly amendment.
I have to hear what you have on all the differences.
Okay.
Before I can accept or do anything. I gotta hear.
I would agree with you, Joe.
Okay.
I've gotta listen to it.
So I'm going to read what my amendment would be. So number one, what I'm suggesting is, and I'm kinda, I took the numbers from the, I'm using the numbers that were already there. So this is not set in stone, obviously. And what I'm suggesting is that the commission will be comprised of seven members. Of the seven members, the positions filled by the township supervisor, the township board member at large, and five township residents at large will be the voting members. So right now, that's what I'm suggesting. And again, what I'm saying is that the engineer and the finance director will no longer be board members. And.
What will they be? So I understand.
They will be, they are employees of the township, and they will be, they can be at the meeting if the, if they're asked to be at the meeting.
What, I gotta ask this. What would your reason be for two experts that have been dealing with this? One does have an expert in bridge issues who's done a lot, and one has done all the finance. Why wouldn't you want them on the board? What would be the, what would be the downfall of those two experts being on a board?
I think that they don't need to be on the board. The chairman of the commission would ask them to attend the meetings as needed. If they need to be at the meetings as employees of the township, they could be there, the way Brian is here, the way Derek is here.
Okay, Kristen looked at other boards that have to do, I'm sorry, other commissions have to do with bridges, and those are some important people that she recommended to be on the board. That's coming right from the attorney.
The attorney, you said that the attorney also suggested that we had, have a second member on the board, a second board member. And is that still?
Yeah, like a liaison, supervisor or somebody else?
Yes, but I heard you being willing to change that.
Well, I'm willing to. I wanna make this palatable, because I wanna vote on it tonight and get this through, so we can have a bridge commission.
That's fine. So what I'm saying.
What you have.
So what I'm saying is, the engineer and the finance director could be like Mr. Freel, like Mr. Thiel. They could be asked to be at all the meetings. They don't actually have to be board members. They are, they are paid employees of the township. And the other part of it is, I would like to also add, all bridge commission board meetings will be audio and video recorded for the viewing, for viewing by Groseal residents. We're going to spend sixty million dollars on a bridge that's a hundred-plus years old. I think that it makes sense to have the more eyes that are able to see what's going on. And as I said, we have more than, I'm sure, we have more than seven people that are interested in being on the bridge commission, and I'm sure that we have more than seven people that have the know-how and knowledge to be on the bridge commission. And I don't think that it's, I think it's in the best interest of the township and its residents to have a larger board rather than a smaller board. You're asking three or four people to do all this work, learning how to, you know, when I ran for office, I said that I would be supportive of commissions and committees and support them to do the jobs that they are supposed to do. That's what our whole government is about, commissions and committees. I think that the DPS Commission has done a fine job, and I'm asking to model it after that commission. Those board members make every effort to be here regularly. People are, you know, wanna be on that board. Why, you know, streamlining something that is sixty million dollars doesn't make sense to me as the treasurer. I think that we need to have extra eyes on this to keep very, very close, closely watch what the finance, what finances are, you know, being spent, what's actually being done on the bridge. I think that if we, and if we shrink the commission down, we are possibly adding more work to the Mr. Thiel. So I think that good commissions, like the DPS, add to the value of what we're doing.
Okay. First off, the last, let's go backwards. The last thing that you had there about the video and audio, it's automatic. That's our policy.
It's not.
That's not our policy?
Not always.
To have our.
Not always.
Every commit?
Police or different.
Are you talking about study sessions, Kevin?
No, no.
I noticed you said commission meetings.
You said commission meetings. We have a policy that all commission meetings will be videoed and archived, and audiod, rather. It's put on Facebook. Can you confirm that, sir?
Yeah, all regular, all regular.
Regular meetings are.
So a special meeting, not necessarily, but.
So we don't, I don't see that, we don't need that in the, it's already in our policy.
I disagree with that. I'm sorry.
Well, you can disagree, Kevin, but I'll show you the policy. Come see me tomorrow, or I'll.
Well, no, what I'm saying to you is, there are meetings that are not recorded, and they.
In the policy, you're correct. In the policy, Groseal Township policy says that the group itself, which could be like the police commission, the fire commission, if they have a study session, that it is open. It does not have to be audiod, video, under the Open Meetings Act. It's already open. It has to be open. Everyone can attend.
When I, I will say, when I ran for treasurer.
Oh, that's fine.
I said that I was, I wanted all the meetings to be videotaped and recorded.
Okay.
And this is continuation of what I promised the people I would work towards. I think that commission, or I think that the township residents, voters deserve to see what the heck is going on.
Sure.
At Township Hall.
I'm in agreement.
At all the meetings. Unless there is some legal reason that they can't watch it, it all should be recorded, and it all should be presented to them. Some of our meetings are not. Some very important meetings, where executive chiefs and, you know, we've had meetings where people were not included, and I don't, or the public was not included in the sense that it was not recorded and videotaped. Are the meetings open because of the Open Meetings Act? Yes. But the more transparent, the more, the better, I think it is.
So we're going, okay, we have a policy, then we need to, again, look at our policies, then. The policy does have every meeting. I, let's just, I'm not gonna debate that one. Let's just go to the next one. Your second one.
So what I'm first saying is, if.
I was going backwards. Go ahead.
If you, if you don't wanna have two people from the board, that's your choice. You said you did want two people from the board when we talked.
I said, that's fine. And I don't have a problem with that. The second one.
So the second part is, I'm asking that it be set up like the DPS Commission, where we have five residents who help.
I get that part. But the second one, as you said, you would want the chairman to request those people here. I know that the finance director is.
You're saying.
The second one you talked about, Kevin?
I'm saying that the finance director and the engineer, all, we can ask, we can write it in there that they can be asked to go to every meeting. We can ask Mr. Thiel to go to every meeting. We can ask Mr. Freel. So we can ask those people to go to the meetings. We don't actually have to put them on the board. Not that it matters.
They are, our finance director with this bridge issue has her fingers in more than we've, anybody else has done within this township.
I'm aware of what she's doing.
And our engineer is absolutely, I think, necessary, which at, believe it or not, is no cost to us when it comes to the meetings. That, which is a great thing. So not that cost is everything here, but just to let you know.
If you wanna put those two people on there as.
Here's what I wanna see. I don't wanna see number three in there. We already have a policy. I don't want the chairman. Number three was about the audio and video. We do audio and video every meeting.
That's not true.
Every regular meeting is audiod and video.
I'm asking, I'm asking that all meetings of this commission are audio and video.
And that's separate than our township policy. Because as a study session.
This is a separate policy then.
Okay, okay. And I'm the one that has to okay your friendly amendment. So I, number three isn't a part of it. Number two, I don't want a chairperson to have to ask the two, two as important peoples could be to show up to a meeting, when, no offense to anybody out there that's from the public, but the chairperson of this commission will be from the public, that they deem and see fit when these people should show up. They should automatically be there at every meeting.
I just said, I said, you can amend this.
And I see no problem just making a part of it. It's all semantics. That's semantics.
Well, that's what language.
It is semantics. Okay.
The whole.
I will take your friendly amendment.
The whole agenda or amendment.
Hold on.
Is semantics.
If you say, well, I don't, I'm not into semantics. If you want.
It's words.
If you want five people from, I will accept your amendment. If you would like to see five people as opposed to three people, I will give you that in your friendly amendment. Or if you want the other, I'm gonna say no to you. You decide what you wanna do, then.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm saying that I will absolutely take your friendly amendment, that you would like to see five, and we'll vote on that. Citizens plus two board members, that makes seven, as opposed to only three citizens.
I'd like to interject here a minute.
Well, hold on.
I will take that. I would just ask you to drop two and three, because I don't think it's necessary. I think we need, those are two most important people we need at those meetings, and I want them there every meeting as the township supervisor.
So, so are you, you're saying to me that you want them as board members?
I would like them as board members, because I would like them at every single commission meeting.
Okay, so they're board members, non-voting board members?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And.
Is that, is that reasonable to you?
I'm being, I'm compromising with what you think is, I'm, whatever you think is important to you.
It is to me as a supervisor, to have them.
That's fine. Great.
And then, will your friendly amendment, then, only on number one, I'm gonna ask that we, I will accept this amendment for five people, and two and three are not on there.
Well, we also.
We can talk about policies if you like later.
So there's more than, the issue number one is, you wanna keep the supervisor as a board member, a member at large as a board member.
And then five, you're requesting.
From residents. Five public residents.
I will accept that friendly amendment. We can vote on it, that you like.
Well, so, so the other part of it is, and just so I'm saying it out loud correctly, is, and the finance director and the engineer would also be board members.
Correct. Non-voting, but I want them there at every meeting.
Okay. That works for me.
Is that fair to you? I mean, is that reasonable?
What I'm saying is, what I'm proposing is what I think is fair for the taxpayer.
I have no problem with that.
It's not about me. It's about what the taxpayer wants.
I'm asking you to knock off two and three. I will go with one and the other changes, and that's the friendly amendment we'll vote on.
Well, so you've changed your proposal, so now you have to allow another set of discussion. Or you should. I guess you don't have to. You can call the question, but.
Joe.
Comments, so if that goes through.
Well, your vote will be your comment. Your vote's your comment. No offense.
I'm not comfortable with taking a vote, because I don't think we all have a common consensus on the way this thing's going down. We're doing something because we're feeling a push for a certain date. I'm thinking right now, listening to this in my brain, I'd call it a little study session on another moment, because we have this agenda we have to address behind this, and talk this thing through a little more.
This is gonna be the second time I think we've brought this up, though, and I, right.
Well, I don't know how many ti, I don't know how many times it's gonna take to come up with an agreement, but I don't hear anything here that everybody's totally happy with. And I think we have to have more of a common understanding.
Totally happy, that's the point.
Because we're gonna have to enforce it when we're done.
The point is, not everybody has to agree. That's the beauty of this.
Okay, I would like, go ahead, Jameson, go ahead, whatever you like.
Well, if you wanna go for it.
Yeah, no, I would, I'm, whatever it takes. If I call the question, I'm gonna call the question, and I will accept it, though. I'll accept your friendly amendment, and we'll vote on that. And if that doesn't.
No, I mean.
Yeah, I will accept that.
Well, so you're accepting what my amendment with your, with your suggestions in it.
Yes.
I'm satisfied with that.
We will vote on it, but we gotta get a vote.
My other question is, is there, are there any other, do we need to include anybody else's comments so that they can make a decision to vote yes or no? That's what, so I'm asking, Jameson, is that, so do we need to let anybody else make other comments here?
You don't, the supervisor runs the meeting, right? If he says comments are closed, then.
I've already closed the comments.
I didn't know you closed. Okay, all right, then.
Your votes, they're common, and we need to get business done, and this is how I have to do it.
I just have one question, though, about, it's a point of how we're working. So.
Sure, sure.
If you accept the friendly amendment, and we vote, and it doesn't pass, does it, do we revert back to the original?
We can vote on the original amendment, then.
Is that correct? I just wanna, okay, thank you.
It's the same issue.
I just wanna understand. Thank you.
Do we need a second on the friendly amendment?
We do.
Brian?
Okay, does somebody second his amendment? He gave what he has. An amendment, Kevin has agreed.
I'm gonna need an actual motion on that, too.
To the number one. So make a motion, Kevin, which is the five-member citizen board, along with the two township board members and two consultants, or two township employees, which are the consultants, which is basically what we have.
So it'll be a, it'll be seven voting members.
Correct.
And two consultants.
Correct.
Non-voting.
Correct.
And two of the, out of the seven, two of those will be you as the supervisor and a.
And we will pick somebody, and we'll go after who wants to be a part of it.
Right.
I could probably summarize it into a motion, Brian, if that.
That is fine with me.
Okay. And for the record, this is not my motion nor my amendment. This is Joe's motion, Kevin's amendment. The Groseal Township Board hereby approves and authorizes the publication of the attached Bridge Commission Ordinance with the following changes. The membership of the board shall consist of nine members, two non-voting members, who consist of the township deputy treasurer, or I'm sorry, finance director, and the township bridge engineer. The seven voting members will consist of five members of the public, the township supervisor, and a township board member at large.
Okay. I'll second it, then.
It's actually gonna be civil engineer.
That's a civil engineer?
Civil engineer.
There's both a civil engineer and a treasurer on this thing, right? That, the finance. That the the finance, okay, I make sure I heard it.
Okay, now here's what we're gonna do. So we, there's no, we're gonna get this clear. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, so. Bill.
I'm turning nay.
Did we get this seconded?
I did.
You did second it.
I seconded, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay, uh, Mickey.
No.
Jameson.
Nay.
Uh, Margaret.
Nay.
Uh, okay, go ahead, Mark, and uh.
As amendment, aye.
That's a yes?
Yes. Kevin is yes.
And Jay, um, we're going to say, um, aye, and it's down. So, uh, this goes down, now we need to do the original amendment, then.
Original.
Original, I'm sorry, motion, uh, action item. How do we do this, Brian, then? Just go back, same thing?
Would somebody reread that just to make sure we understand? We've been through enough here.
No, it's it's the same thing, the township, all I have on here is approves and authorizes the publication of the attached Bridge Commission Ordinance, which was attached to your paperwork. So that was the, um, three people, uh, two, uh, board members, correct? And two consul, I'm gonna call them consultants, I'm sorry, I know that that, um.
They're employees.
Employees, uh, they're not both.
And in that structure, there's, and in that structure, those consultants are mandatory, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, all right, let's do this again. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, just so we square this up, so, uh, Bill.
Yes.
Okay, um, Mickey, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Jameson.
Yes.
Okay, Joe, um, it would be yes. I know I'm supposed to go last, but, um, we'll just go down the line. Kevin?
I don't think this is in the best interest of the taxpayer, no.
That'd be a no. Okay, Mark?
No.
That'd be a no. And Margaret?
Yes.
So that's a five to two, that motion has carried. All right, thank you, people. Where are we here now? Let me get back to where we are.
The HydroCorp Residential Commercial Industrial Service Agreement.
I wanna make sure I'm right on this one. Um. Okay. Commission ordinance says, I mean, HydroCorp, who has HydroCorp?
I have HydroCorp.
Kevin does?
HydroCorp Residential and Commercial Industrial Service Agreement. The recommendation is based based upon a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services. The Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the execution of both residential and commercial cross-connection service agreements with HydroCorp. History and purpose, water distribution systems are designed to operate with continuous positive pressure. This helps ensure contamination cannot enter the system through points of connection or leaks. Through difficult, though difficult to detect, water pressure can sometimes be disrupted, causing water to accidentally flow backwards. This can result in siphoning of unknown materials into the drinking water. To keep this from occurring, backflow prevention devices are required to be installed in both commercial and residential applications where backflow is possible. Part, is it I for?
Fourteen.
Part fourteen of the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act. Administrative rules prohibits cross-contamination or cross-connections and requires each water supply to implement a cross-connection prevention program, including inspections, testing, record keeping, and education. The township contracts with vendor HydroCorp for compliance with Part fourteen regulations, the attached are contracts for both the township's residential and commercial programs. Uh, the township and most municipalities in southeast Michigan utilize HydroCorp for these services. They are the leading service provider in this area. And Derek, would you like to make any comments about this?
Um, I'd I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. I think you did a great, great job in explaining what this is all about. Um, the township uses HydroCorp right now for its residential. Um, under this proposal, we'd be using for, using them for our commercial services as well. Um, and, uh, this has been built into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and make sure that we're in compliance with Part fourteen of, uh, the Safe Drinking Water Act, so.
Okay, is there any questions from the board? I think you guys explained that very well.
Uh, I I read what Derek wrote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek.
So, uh, action item number six, HydroCorp Residential Commercial Industrial Services Agreement, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, thank you. Um, I'll take seven. The Groseal Township Board hereby accepts a proposal from H&amp;H Engineering at a cost not to exceed three million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for design, construction, and compliance engineering services. The Groseal Toll Bridge, as presented in the proposal dated April second, two thousand twenty-five, and attached to this action item. I need a second.
Second.
Bids for bridge engineering services for the toll bridge were due on April second, twenty-five. The township received one bid, the bid was from H&amp;H. H&amp;H is the vendor used to perform the pre-purchase review of the bridge. And I would just like to say first that H&amp;H, um, we've done work with them. Um, they are a nationally known recommended company. Um, one of the bridge builders that, uh, Derek and I had spoke with and had a meeting on, said that H&amp;H is an absolute excellent firm. And the good news is, they were well under what the original estimate for our engineering for the entire process, um, should be, which is very good news. So are there any questions on this one? Um, you had it in your packet. Um, anything for myself or Derek?
Um, I do have a question, I'm sorry I didn't ask this prior to the meeting, that we only had one, uh, company, uh, bid for this. And I'm wondering, is there a reason only one company bid? And considering it's a three million-plus-dollar expenditure, should we get a re, uh, consider a second bid? Uh, consider a second round of bidding?
Um, to answer your questions, um, the requirements for this type of engineering is, they're fairly strict. So, um, we specified that the company needed to have experience in mechanical, mechanical, um, or swing bridges, um, and also they had to be licensed in the state of Michigan. So based upon that, there's maybe only three or four firms in the state of Michigan that actually do this type of work. Um, we made sure we advertised it, um, out there, um, all over that we possibly could. We went out and solicited, we put it on, um, the state site, um, had a lot of, um, companies that that pulled, um, the specs. Um, I talked to a number of them. I think it's just simply the familiarity that H&amp;H had with the bridge. Um, it dissuaded some contractors from from bidding on it. Um, I, um, in my professional opinion, would try to dissuade the board from rebidding this. Um, if H&amp;H understands what the market is and the potential bidders on a second round would be, um, my concern would be the bid could potentially go up. Um, I think we have a very solid price here, um, and I would recommend to the board to to approve this.
Kevin, if it if it helps out any, um, Derek and I met with, as I stated, a bridge builder. I met with a gentleman that owns an engineering, uh, company, and I also spoke with, um, two individuals. And Derek, I'm not sure, we were at a Wayne County meeting just the other night. Not sure, Derek, if you were with me, but the two individuals are with a competitor. And the competitor said that H&amp;H is an excellent company, the bridge builder. Mr. Smoke has used them in the past, and the county bridge, I guess that'd be Wayne County, Kevin. Uh, Wayne County has used them. So every, I haven't spoke to one individual that said, um, you know, anything other than they're an excellent firm. And they do, as Derek said, there's only one of a few that work on that type of bridge that have the, um, experience, if you will, and they've worked on both bridges. So, and the, and not to say that the price was was a very good price, um, that we first expected much higher, and it came in, and I will, you know, I would discourage us to go back out.
Um, though, the policies of the township allow you for a professional service, actually just go ahead and select a bidder, or I'm sorry, a vendor, um, so the fact that the township went that extra step and wouldn't solicit at bids, uh, you went above and beyond. Um, I think, um, the fact that H&amp;H has a familiarity with the bridge from from doing work on that bridge for us, the township before, that's a benefit. I think that there were emails going around, uh, when this first came out, about the fact that H&amp;H is doing work with the county bridge and being able to coordinate the schedule between those two, and them having that inside knowledge of what's happening with that bridge, there's a lot of benefits to that. Um, so I think there's a lot of pluses. Um, I think if it was, um, if we were to look at, you know, the preferred vendor, I think H&amp;H probably would be the preferred vendor, um, if we were to go ahead and just select one. So, um, I'm very happy with the price that was put forth. Um, I'm happy with the efforts that we went to to solicit bids. So I have, um, the utmost comfort in in recommending the award of this.
Hope that helps.
My understa- so what we were saying to the taxpayer is that we did, we did, we did go through all the due diligence to choose, uh, to choose a company. This was the only bidder, because there are so few people that actually work on this type of bridge, and, uh, you are comfortable as a professional, as our civil engineer is, that this is, uh, okay way to go.
That's an accurate statement, yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Absolutely, Kevin, if that makes you feel better.
Thank you, Derek, thank you.
All right.
Mister Supervisor.
Okay, any other questions on action item number seven, Groseal Toll Bridge Construction Engineering Service Bid? With no more questions, um. Number seven action item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion is carried.
Just to let the board know, following that approval, um, we'll get them working ASAP on the things that we need to to get moving. You, um, as was referenced by the the public comment earlier in the meeting, and all, you are all aware of the schedule that was proposed. We want to try to get things off the ground here. We have some compliance issues that we need to get, um, taken care of. Um, so we'll get them working, uh, tomorrow on these, on these various items. Also, one thing to mention, the bonding that occurred, the first round anticipated the engineering cost is significantly more than what this amount is. Um, that money is not lost. Um, what will end up happening is when we get bids for the actual work, um, if they come in as estimated, that movie, money will move over from the engineering cost over to the construction, and we could potentially bond less for construction if we have that additional money coming over, so.
Derek, are we on time, then? Are we meeting our timing right now with this, or where are we at? Like you had laid out a calendar for everything that had to get done.
Yeah, so, um, you know, part of that calendar, all that calendar was really an estimate. And we'd always prefaced that with, you know, we have to get the engineers on board to to understand what the realistic timeline is. So, um, to the comment earlier, yes, there is going to be an, um, elongation of that schedule. But the key always was to make sure that it's coordinated with Wayne County's work, so that we always had an operable bridge that could service the residents. So so that's really the key, more than anything, right? And with H&amp;H on board, I think that they're very aware of that need for coordination, and with their work with the county and our work with the county, our hope is to make sure that's all coordinated together to make sure that we achieve, um, what was just mentioned.
And Derek brings up an excellent point, especially about timing. I know one of the gentlemen earlier asked a question about some of the timing is off. Well, our most important thing isn't that our timing was correct when we initially did this. Our most important issue right now is that Wayne County and Groseal Township work together, so one bridge is open at a time, and that's more important than anything.
And we're headed in that direction, right?
Absolutely, and the county, it's a, it's a new board here, and it's a new county, uh, group that we're dealing with, and everything has been, they've been very accommodating in working with us, because they don't have to work with us, but working with us ensures Groseal to get our necessities on and off this island.
And what we'll, what we'll do following this approval is we'll update that information on our website so that the residents have the most current, um, schedule that we have access to, um, to to make sure that's all reflected, um.
But remember what I told you earlier, you need to fix that so old people like us can actually see the the dates.
Yeah, and we haven't modified that in a, in 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 quite a bit of time, so it needs to to be changed, and we'll try to do our best to increase it to like forty-eight font or something.
Show somebody that's older when you're done.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good. All right, discussion item. Um. On this discussion item for the cell tower consultants, um, do we, do we want to go ahead with this tonight?
Um. I guess I, I, what's the, where are we at with our current cell tower? We don't have a cell tower consultant right now, do we?
No, we do not.
Okay, so that's the, that's what's bringing this forward, is that we need to start looking at that and.
Well, more than, we we need to start looking at that, and we did go out for proposals, and we did receive three proposals. Um, I believe you guys all got copies of those proposals. Really, the purpose of this is to discuss, where do we go from here? Um, are we happy with any of these proposals? And do we want to schedule interviews to to meet with any of these these groups? Are we unhappy with the proposals received, and do we want to go re, go rebid it? Um, really wanted to have that conversation with the board to see what the next step that you would like to see is on this.
I'd like to see us try to rebid it. I think they were, I think we can find somebody that will do a little bit better with this situation than what we have here, based on what I read through.
Do we have to rebid it, or is there an option to go back to the existing bidders and say, hey, all these are just too high, we're not gonna go with them?
Yeah, we can go back and talk and speak with the 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 companies that made these proposals. My concern is, there's a number of them that, um, they were too costly, and maybe they didn't respond in a way that indicated they, um, understood what we were looking for.
I didn't see that in there, that it's kind of like what we need.
Right.
That's just me, maybe that's lack of my understanding. I'm not a cell tower expert by any means, nor my attorney, but I didn't see what we needed, we were getting, and I'm not saying the proposals are bad, I'm just saying.
They weren't even coming close to what I would have expected.
I didn't see it, and that could be my lack of understanding. So what could be, what would you recommend the next move that we do, then? What what could you recommend?
It's it's either rebid or sit down with them and do exactly like you said. Um, I I know one in particular I would like to get some more information about. Um, you know, they had offered, um, services, but they wanted something in return. You know, an an obligation or a partnership in the future. I don't know what exactly that looks like.
Part ownership.
Yeah, um, so, you know, I do have a number of questions and maybe some clarifications that are necessary. And some of the dollar figures are just completely out of bounds. Um, you know, and foregoing revenue, future revenue is not something that, you know, I would see favorable to the residents, um, so.
I'm looking at just one longer term of the agreement, because I know when I'm looking at agreements, if it's gonna be really complex, and they say, well, you know, we'll pay you for two hours' work, it's not worth it, right? Because you know it's gonna take you so much work. They might just want to say, hey, put it down, this has been it for so many years.
May I ask this que- oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
That's what I was just saying, to recoup their cost investment in it, that's all.
Okay, now, please, this is a question that I I've tried to hash over, and tell me what I'm doing here, because we just went through the cell towers not to sell them, to keep them, and we get revenue. Do we need an attorney other than our own, an expert for right now? Do we need a group or a group of attorneys to review anything? If we all decided we're going to keep the revenue coming in, and at a later date we may want to sell these towers, let's just say, but not now and probably not with this board. What is it that we need, then, to get a consultant for that would be beneficial? I mean, do you understand, no, I'm not knocking attorneys, that's not it, I'm saying, why do we need one? Yeah, if if our needs are not something that we're looking to sell, looking to change, looking, what is it they do for us?
So here was my only concern, did we?
I sure didn't read it.
Did we ever get anything back that said where we were at? Uh, I know we paid for services, but did we get any documentation that said we resolved this, uh, this land usage issue with AT&amp;T or Crown Enterprises? Um, you know, what, did we get anything that said, here's what was done for this?
Um, as far as the current lease that we have that's expired and the negotiations pertaining to that contract and that usage of that property?
Right, so they they had overstepped their bounds, right?
Yep.
I never saw anything that showed us how that was resolved. Was there something provided to you?
It was not resolved. The the previous consultant was in the process of negotiating resolution on back rent for that portion of property, and then a future contract, but that was never concluded. So that's still outstanding. that's still outstanding. He has offered to bring a new consultant or whatever consultant is, is decided upon by the board into the loop about how those conversations were, where they were at so that they could pick those up from that point, but it never was resolved to conclusion, basically, the, the relationship, you know.
So months, months went by and nothing was resolved with respect to the, you know, them overstepping their boundaries on our?
Well, and that had occurred years ago.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we paid for something that for years never got resolved, is all I'm trying to get it out.
Well, and I think more than anything, it was lost revenue because they overstepped the, the property line and utilized township property without compensation, which was part of that negotiation that never finished, which was that back rent, right? So that will be something that will have to be resolved by the carrier and the consultant to make sure that the township has made a hole for that property that was used for all those years. So that will be something, some, whatever firm you choose will have to deal with.
Well, to, I think to the supervisor's point, can we utilize our current attorney, you know, for any of that until we find a suitable?
I don't know if she is.
Yeah, I would have to talk to her.
Yeah, we have to talk to her. Go ahead, Kevin, you had something?
When I investigated this, when the suggest, when the last board made the suggestion to sell the towers, I contacted a couple of different attorneys. There are specialists in Michigan, attorneys that specialize in communication towers, communications generally and specifically. I think that talking to those attorneys might be the next step for the best interest of the township, to find out where we stand and whether, what, what options we have going forward. I, I think that the proposals that we've received so far are just way, way over, way ex, more expensive than expected and I, as you said, Derek, I think that the one person, the one group just didn't understand what we were looking for. I think a, a professional, an attorney that specializes in this would be the way to go.
So what's the board's pleasure then on, what's our next step then?
I have a suggestion on that. There's an industry publication for lawyers called Martinville Hubbell. It's nationwide on every specialty you'd ever want to imagine. And I, when I ever used one when I needed to, I went to the Dearborn Public Library, the, the larger libraries have it, there might be something closer, but you can, you can find those people and, and they're going to be qualified. The reason I did it just to illustrate an example is that at that time I was in commercial insurance. So let's suppose we have a truck that's in New Mexico, but the company's headquarters is Detroit, Michigan, and he strikes and kills somebody. They have to find a lawyer in that community in New Mexico that will service their behalf. You could get references there. What I'm getting at here is this is a specialty. You can look in there and there will be comments about the person, you can compare one with the other and that might be good for this purpose as I'm hearing this, Kevin's remark stimulated my memory on that.
I can ask at work too. I mean, we get asked all the time for referrals, even outside of our firm.
This is supervisor, can we just confer, consult with our current, you know, residents? See if they can handle, if they can't, then we can start.
Why don't we do this? I was thinking of this. Thank you, Mark. Why, why don't we just do this? Why don't I make a phone call tomorrow? Why don't we, if you want to call table, well, you don't table discussion, it's just over. And let me call Kristen tomorrow, let me explain the situation and then we will notify the board and the board then will let me know how you guys would like to proceed. Does that sound fair?
Perfect, perfect.
That's fair. Okay, why don't we do that? We good?
Thank you.
All right, we're good. Thank you, okay. That's it for discussion, okay. Mr. Jameson, you're up.
Ah, so, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday. The Rec Commission has previously met on the third. I'm going to keep it short, I, I have nothing else to report.
Mr. Flavin.
The Treasurer's Report for April 14th, 2025. For the month of March, Groseal Township had a total of fourteen million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents invested in the various accounts and investment vehicles. These accounts generated interest income of fifty thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine point three seven with an average interest rate of three point one eight percent unpaid. Treasurer's Office unpaid twenty twenty-four property tax information has been sent to Wayne County in early June. Wayne County will start sending out taxes due. Letters to property owners who failed to pay their twenty twenty-four property taxes. Interest is calculated per month, so it would be wise to pay as soon as possible. If your taxes went to the county delinquent, if your taxes went to the county delinquent, contact the Wayne County Treasurer's Office or at WayneCounty.com/PTA or at three one three two two four five nine nine zero. That's three one three two two four five nine nine zero. If you would like information on paying your taxes and the balance due and to everybody that has paid their taxes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Margaret.
So I have a few items that I want to cover, but the first one I want to mention, a big thank you to the township staff for all the work they've been putting in on the Bridge Pass update efforts. I know there have been a lot of hurdles, but the township staff along with Derek Thiel and Supervisor Porcelli have worked diligently and I know there's a lot of frustration out there, but I just want to commend them for, you know, doing this extra effort and supporting the people of the island with their Bridge Pass updates. The next is, I'm the police liaison and our next commission meeting is April 15th, which is tomorrow at 6:00 PM and we just accepted the resignation of Mr. Paul Anderson who supported the police commission for over thirty years and we just want to thank Paul for his many years of service on that commission. Another couple of people I want to highlight are Officer John Canterbury for his dare work. The kids love him, he does a great job with them at the schools. While we don't have the staffing or funding for a full-time school resource, resource officer, Officer Canterbury does a fabulous job with them. And another thing I want to point out, I happened to be driving down my street and there were two little girls selling friendship bracelets and one of the officers, Officer Benson, pulled up to talk to the girls and, you know, kids love this kind of interaction and I just want to point it out and I know that there's a lot of people who say, well, you know, they shouldn't have time for things like that, they should be busier. Well, you know what? This is exactly what I love to see with our community, our officers interacting with, it's, it's community policing and these girls were so thrilled, smile from ear to ear. So I just want to, you know, thank Officer Benson for his time to, to stop and do something like that. Another one I want to highlight is that the Groseal Police Department along with the Guidance Center have made Narcan available in our community. This is another one that I know that, you know, people are concerned about, but you know what, having this could save a life and there's no questions asked. If you're an adult, you can go into dispatch and they will, they'll give you a box of Narcan and, you know, you could save a life someday with that and it, to me, it's, it's pretty critical.
Margaret, can you just explain, maybe some don't know what that is?
Oh, yep, sure. So Narcan is an emergency treatment for opioid overdose and it's not, I know some people think it's okay, well, if you're, you're a drug addict, you're an opioid addict. Well, they've also found that it's actually been helpful for people who didn't know they were, they had an allergy to opioids or they, they had a child get into their prescriptions and this, having this saved lives. So it, it crosses lines of, it's not just for people who are addicted to opioids, it's made differences for others as well. So the, the PD, the dispatch, you can just walk up and you ask them for a box of Narcan as long as you're an adult, they're, they'll give you that, no questions asked. The final one I want to mention is that we've had a posting for a road patrol officer up since we had a patrol officer leave our, the department and another option we have been considering that we would have to bring into the board is we could basically do a, oh, if we wanted to have somebody from the academy, we can, we can have, oh, we can basically sponsor them. So if they want to go through the academy, we could look into doing something like that if we feel they're the right fit for the department. We can apply for a grant that would support this, there's a grant available, it's called the Public Safety Academy Assistance Grant, up to twenty thousand and this would cover the majority, if not all, of the requirements for that person if we had chose to sponsor somebody. So that's another option for us and we would bring that into the board for approval at that time and that's all I have on that.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mickey.
So on the Fire Department and Open Space, both of their next meetings are May 6th, Fire Department at 5:00 and Open Space at 7:00. For the Fire Department, we're looking to determine who will be our next fire marshal since Chief Roscoe was promoted, so we should be interviewing probably in two to three weeks. The last week they did training, I always tell them I want to go to their training and see what they do. It was amazing going there. First of all, they threw me in the truck, told me to put on my seatbelt and didn't tell me where we were going. Then they laughed because they only pulled around behind the building and so they had two vehicles there, one that was flat and one that was on its side. And so in order to do the training with different people that are at different levels, the more experienced firefighters had the vehicle that was on its side so that they actually put a ladder up to it and they were climbing inside, cutting it away, assuming that, you know, if somebody got trapped in a vehicle like that. The other one was flat on the ground and it was funny because you could look and everybody was so intent on the training, whether they were the ones with the saw in their hand or not. So when the fire chief talks about training, their classes are excellent. So I was glad I got to go to that and see it firsthand. An Open Space and Joe, chime in if you want, but we're looking at Dump the Junk on May 3rd, but only if the bridge is open and so I believe you're going to be meeting with Wayne County tomorrow.
I will, yeah, I'll put that in my report, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I mean, I'll go over it, is what I'm trying to say.
So if you tell us, if you find out it's going to be open on May 3rd, we'll have Dump the Junk then, if not, we'll just have one in the fall. Also, I've been calling and driving Derek and, and Ross and others crazy on encroachments to see how we're addressing them and they came up with a great solution. James will be at our Open Space meetings from now on and so on a monthly basis, he can report any actions that were taken and if property has been restored. So Derek, thank you for working on that today. Another thing is Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy, if you can look at their website between them and Open Space, there's going to be a lot of activity coming up for Earth Day. And so just for example, with Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy, I won't read them all, but I have two pages of events coming up. For example, April 22nd, they have the Oriole Talk at the Resource Center. April 26th is the All Island Cleanup at 10:00 to noon and you can actually go with Kiwanis at the VFW or over to the Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy to work with them on their property. April 27th is the Earth Day Celebration. It goes on and on and so we also invited firsthand all the seniors at, the senior apartments that are right across the street from the Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy, so we hope to see them there. I believe that is it for me.
Okay, William.
Thank you. I sit on the two commissions, the airport is first. Groseal Airport and Halls, the, the flying service will host Aviation Day here at Groseal. It's for first and third graders from Groseal School System. April 22nd and 23rd, they'll have an event at, from 9:15 to 11:15 and then on May 5th from 12:30 to 2:30. The Groseal Airport also has an event coming up with the Michigan Flight Museum, that used to be the former Yankee Air Museum, Air Force, and they'll have that event here at this airport. That will be July 26th or perhaps July 27th, depending on whether or not there's rain, that's their safety valve, so to speak. And if you want tickets, there's a Huey helicopter ride. Building 63, they, they took a piece of it, it's a very large building over there and divided it into smaller sections and were very successful with rental and they're processing another portion of that for another four, four rooms. They're not actually rooms, they're pretty good size, yeah, a couple thousand feet, but they had so much success, they figured that this would be a way to use more of the building for a, an income generator, so to speak. Finally, the airport is, is hiring, is for summer, you know, for like lawn work, roadway work, maintenance, it's all supervised. You have to be eighteen years of age or older, but for somebody that's coming back from college, they need a few bucks to make it through, otherwise, this is a good opportunity. Now, the Planning Commission is, is still working with their executive committee. John Schweickert, Jay Fucci and Eric Ranker are their executive committee members and they're putting together the, the, the new plan for the future, for the next twenty years. Today I had an interesting morning, I, I stopped by SEMCOG to hear their seminar, if you would, on SEMCOG 101, which is basically a presentation of a lot of the services, things that they will perform for communities, that, that, communities like Groseal Township. And they're very skilled, knowledgeable people. Most of them I talked to have been there for twenty years, basically, nineteen, twenty years, testified sometimes on behalf of issues related, testified to Congress. They, they are, we have lobbyists. All of these resources, because we are members of SEMCOG, are provided to us at no cost. And it's hardly a public issue that hasn't been part of the effort of them over the past twenty or so years. I was very impressed with their love of helping, helping people. They, they take, they seem to take pride and I could just sense a joy in, in helping somebody with their water sewage system or something and, and they, they do it meaningfully and at a reasonable cost. I'm, I'm going to try and talk to Joe and Derek and see if there might be opportunity to avail ourselves of, of the resources that they have for some of our issues and concerns. That pretty well wraps up, wraps up my report.
All right. I have the pleasure of sitting on the zoning board of appeals and this will be short. We have nothing scheduled for the month of April and nothing for the month of May as I know at this time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Derek.
Good evening, Board and Residents. Just a quick couple items on my report for this evening. First, the DPS meeting for April was canceled, the next one is scheduled for May 13th in this room at seven o'clock. Wanted to go in briefly and discuss the bridge account setup, so these are individuals that have the bridge toll tags. On the overhead is a flyer that is being passed out at the bridge. Actually, Mickey had suggested this and I think it was a great suggestion, for those residents that haven't signed up for their auto charge for their credit card, for their Bridge Pass, this information can be useful in helping you to set up that account. Mr. Freel has done an excellent job in putting together a step-by-step video, that link to YouTube there is the link to that video. If you follow it closely, you should not have any issues with setting up your account, but if you.
Derek, but thank you, but that was a bridge employee that suggested that to me, yeah.
And it was a great suggestion, I know they've been handing them out like crazy, but if you do have problems when you do. And it is a great suggestion. I know they've been handing them out like crazy, but if you do have problems when you do set up your account, um, after following those instructions, um, you can either call the bridge or you can call Township Hall, and we'll do our best to, uh, walk you through that process. Uh, there has been a, a number of comments this evening, uh, about thanks, uh, to the staff. Um, I would definitely echo those, uh, those thanks. Um, Margie Gate, Brian Freel, Elena Farmer, uh, Amy Canatella, uh, and Maureen, uh, Farrell, and also all the bridge staff up there have been pitching in to get everybody signed up, um, to ensure that when the free bridge does close, um, that the toll booths, um, the gates, the bridge passes, all those things work, um, to get you on and off the island as quickly as possible. Um, so there, there has been question, there have been questions online about like, when do I want to have or when do I need to have the sign, um, the sign up completed? Um, really, the goal is to get everybody, um, to sign up prior to the, to the bridge closing. So, um, for the, the short-term repair here this summer. Um, so as soon as we get that exact date, we'll be able to tell you when you absolutely need to have it done by. Um, and the consequence to not having it done by then is you're going to hold up the line because your account won't be set up. There won't be funds on your account to, uh, to allow you passage to the toll booths, and, uh, everybody will be upset with you, um, everybody behind you, uh, because they're going to be held up, uh, because you don't have that set up. So, um, I encourage you to, to, to follow the instructions, uh, watch that video, get your account set up. If you're used to, um, automatic charges to your credit card to repopulate your passes, um, that'll, uh, be set up for you. Um, we still would like you to set up an account if you, if you have a toll tag and you still pay by cash or by, or by check. Um, that can still be accomplished at the toll bridge, uh, but we'd still encourage you to set up an online account. So, um, you don't have to put your credit card information in, just knowing that you have to pay by that method. Um, so, uh, that's probably the biggest thing going on for us right now, um, is getting everybody into that system. Um, the staffing solutions, uh, proposals, I'll be talking to you about those shortly after we look at some of that information. But, um, you know, we're just trying to work that transition. It's been, uh, about two, two and a half weeks now. Um, and with any, you know, transition of ownership of a business, there are going to be some hiccups, but, uh, we're getting through it. Everybody's pitching in, and, uh, we're doing our best to try to make it as seamless as a, of a transition to the public as possible. So, uh, with that, um, I, uh, would echo your comment about Dump the Junk. As soon as we find out when the bridge is going to close, whether that May date will be achievable, um, but we'll let the residents know as soon as we know. So, uh, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Derek. Um, I want to let you know I have a meeting with Derek tomorrow, five P M. with the county, and I'm hoping I will have some answers for you when this closure will occur. Um, I also want to say, and I know this has been echoed a couple of times, but I've got to say this. Um, we have had some issues, obviously, um, with some of the software issues for the bridge. We're getting that taken care of. But, um, we are having three and four individuals at the township are helping out people to help log in, help enter their tag in their account. And we've probably, I'll bet we, we've had hundreds in the last, uh, two weeks. And I know we already thanked Derek was working, Brian was working, Elena was working, and Margie was working, two jobs, um, during the last two weeks. Uh, assisting hundreds of people, data entry, and they have to do their own jobs. Um, I was, I was very proud. We're, we're working through this. We're trying to make a smooth transition as we can. I'm as frustrated as some of the people out there are frustrated. We're getting that taken care of. Um, Derek and I, um, and this, this is what I signed up for, this, the way it is. Um, been working during the day. This bridge issue is almost a full-time job for me. And unfortunately, Derek and I have had some nighttime, um, up at the bridge that we've had to do. And, but this is what it's about. Derek and I both want to make this as smooth for the people of Groseal, and my job right now is to continue this. We had some, somebody said to me, you know, there's always bumps in the road. We had some mountains to go over. Um, that's all there is to it. But my job again is to continue in making sure by the time the Wayne County Bridge closes for, you know, that forty-five day, two-month period, that everything has smoothed out and everything is working correctly with our software, which, which we think we got it done this week, but we're still working on it. And once again, if anybody needs help, we still are taking walk-ins. Brian is doing it. We just named that group. Those four, we're taking walk-ins and separating them so you don't have to wait long, which is a good deal, and they drop what they're doing at that time, and they help the people. Um, I'm, I'm just proud of this group on how they, they want these citizens helped. They, they want them to do it the right way. And as Derek stated, we'd like to see all of you, um, get this done on your account for your tag before this bridge, uh, Wayne County Bridge closes. So, um, with that said, um, that is it for me tonight. Derek covered, uh, everything else. Thank you, sir, for your report. And I will, uh, no, we have public, I'm sorry. Anybody, public comment? Um, can, is he good? Is he out? Oh, come on up. Oh, I know, not you, him. Just state your name and like the usual, you know.
Frank Gerner, Blavell Drive, Groseal. I was just coming in front of the board, just asking. I know that, uh, our bridge is going to go down at some point in time. The biggest thing is, is I think most of the islanders are all thinking about, whoa, whoa, look at the price of how much it's going to cost, going back and forth. I just asked that, the, since we own the bridge, that maybe we make it a little bit more accommodating. Maybe five dollars round trip instead of seven dollars. I know it's, uh, it's not a big thing. The two dollars may mean that, but a lot of people think it's a big money grab because the, uh, Wayne County Bridge will be closed and for two months, or however long it's going to be, we say, whatever they say. It's just, we're not that type of a community. We're a community that believes in each other. And I just think that it would show a lot to the township if the board did something like that, just for the residents, not for the commercial traffic, not for anything else, but just for the residents. And I think that would be a very kind thing, along with us paying taxes on the bridge. It just seems like a big whoop. And I know myself, I'm financially strapped. I mean, everything's going up. Everything just keeps rising. So I just asked the board to look into that, and it would be a great thing to see. I think, I think the community would, would rejoice just knowing that, hey, you know, a couple bucks. I have some other things that I'd like to talk about, but not tonight because I didn't bring them with me.
All right, thank you. Um, you know what? Just, I want to tell you something quick on that. Uh, when we get this bridge commission and get it settled in, we're going to revisit a few things. Um, I just want to let you know, everything was from a formula, from what we pay in that millage to how to run the bridge, to how much we anticipate the revenue. That's all. Not saying yes or no to your, to your request. I'm just letting you know where we stand in the beginning. That's all. And the, uh, bridge commission that we put together will, uh, visit these issues absolutely.
And, uh, not only that, but I also think some of the islanders would like to see something since we own the bridge, all this stuff that we couldn't hear about, like the non-disclosure, like the engineer drafts and stuff like that. I like to hear some of that stuff. I like to see it. We haven't seen anything. All we know is we bought the bridge. We had to wait for it. Now we got the bridge. We paid for the bridge.
We got a legal opinion from our attorney that some of those documents weren't ours to give out. So that's some of the issues that we're dealing with right now. I don't want to get in deep with that, but we did address that. We did address that. Once we take ownership, what occurs, and some people in the community believe that we're, it's not correct. Well, we go by what our, our attorney says to us.
Well, just like buying a car, I think we, we went through this here through the scenarios of, uh, when we were purchasing the bridge, we asked about, you know, engineering and stuff like that there, and they had, you know, just like you buy a car. You take it to a mechanic, look at, hey, is this a good car or not a good car?
Right.
That stuff wasn't disclosed to us because it was under a non-disclosure. We couldn't find out.
Right.
Now we're paying three million dollars for an engineer to come and do some work.
Anything that we can give out will be absolutely to the public, anything that we can legally. Um, I don't want to pay hundreds of thousands, um, to legal fees in a lawsuit because we didn't abide by an agreement from the court and from the attorneys. So that's the reason. So that is it. But we'll look at that too.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public? Nothing with that? Uh, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. End of the meeting. Thank you very much.